Welcome, everyone. We're just gonna wait another minute so everybody can enter the Zoom room. All right, it looks like it's mellowed out. All right, so we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 Board of Education Special Meeting on the Topics of Facility and Consolidation. And we are going to start with a roll call, and I'll start with Vice President Eric Joyce.
President.
Board Clerk Raquel Alvarez. Right, Eleanor Evans.
President.
Thank you, and Mike Blessing.
President.
All right, all present and accounted for. Our next step is the Pledge of Allegiance, which is kind of awkward on Zoom, but Dr. Vitale is gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So if you put your hand over your heart.
And over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. So I'd like to start with the purpose of the meeting tonight. We had a special board meeting last week in which we heard extensively from our community with over thirty public comments on facilities and the consolidation options presented by the district. We also received over a hundred pages of comments that each of us have read, as well as numerous emails. I would like to start this meeting with a motion, and I'm gonna follow up my motion with a rationale. So, so board members are looking at me, because we don't really have an agenda tonight other than to hear, make a decision on the facilities and consolidation, and then hear public comments. So we have over eighteen public comments tonight, but I would like to make a motion, and here we go. We will not move forward with consolidation of schools at this time, and we start the process to rebuild Reynolds Elementary and modernize Surfside Academy. My rationale for this motion is we asked the district as a board to look into finding efficiencies, and they looked into the consolidation. They brought us as board members the information we requested on consolidation, and they made recommendations and provided options. They responded, and I want to say thank you to the district, because it was no easy chore to do all that information and bring it to us in a timely fashion. So thank you very much. They also conducted school site visits at the impacted school sites with the staff, and we also had community input as well. The overwhelming input from our community to include students and the parents that this, the impact of this mood would be detrimental to our students. So I heard you loud and clear last week, as well as in the survey and the email. With all this information we have gathered, I think we may be able to make a decision tonight on the facilities and consolidation. We will still take public comment on this topic, but we have been taking public comment all along on this. So my motion still stands, that we will not move forward with consolidation of the schools at this time, and we will start the process to rebuild Reynolds Elementary and modernize Surfside Academy. Do I have a second?
I will, I will second that motion and agree with everything you said, Stacy, and I think, I think my colleagues also would agree with that, too. It's, it's, we got a lot of great information from folks. We asked staff to go out there and look at these issues of trying to figure out if consolidation can work or not, and in this instance, it doesn't make any sense at this point in time, and maybe it doesn't even longer term to merge Del Rio and Libby. So I support the rebuild of Reynolds, and I support the rebuild of, the modernization of Surfside. So I second your motion, and let's vote, or hear from our colleagues and vote.
Yeah, let me, I'm looking at my board colleagues, because this is a different meeting format, because it's not a business-to-business meeting that we usually hold with multiple items. Our only job here is to make a decision tonight. So I'm looking at my board colleagues. Either one of you feel comfortable making a decision now before we hear public comment, or do you want to hear all the public comment prior?
So Stacy, very fine for the board to engage in conversation and have everyone give their thoughts about where they're at, but before the vote is taken, we'll need to take public comment.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I would like to hear from my board colleagues if they are supportive and are leaning in this direction. I think that the public speakers may want to hear this. They may, they may not want to speak publicly against it, if they support it, so.
Well, I have a couple of thoughts. Sorry, I wasn't quite prepared to go into conversation yet, even though it should be. The Reynolds timeline, what would that look like if this motion were to go forward?
In my motion, we start the process. So the process means, and I will turn that over to the district, that they're in the very beginning stages. So I don't know if Dr. Norman or Dr. Vitale wants to talk about that.
Sure, the total timeframe takes anywhere between four and five years. So if the board makes that decision, then we begin the clock and the timeline. Remember, there's a lot of work that has to be done before any dirt is moved, but we would begin, we'd engage in that immediately and begin that work. But it's about a four- to five-year timeline, especially on a rebuild.
And the escalation cost after five years, was that built into the fifty million? Or is that, I mean, could we be looking at spending seventy million on Reynolds? I mean, I just really want to be dealing honestly with everybody engaged with this process, because we passed a hundred and sixty million dollar bond. So I just want to be very clear with what's happening.
The number that we gave you is an estimate. I can't give you an escalation cost at this time. Things are a little five percent over how much time? But Andy can, so she's going to speak to that.
Usually we factor in a five percent escalation cost. And our first step with what's been proposed by Dr. Begin, we would start with an RFP for an architect, and then we would begin all preliminary testing. A five percent is built in through the next couple of years. And so you've been part of the Jefferson Project, and you've been part of also the SLR. This is a little different. It's a rebuild, so it's a little bit more robust, but we would look at that same timeline. I shared a sample in our last meeting where I think one of my last slides showed what the timeline would look like, and it started off in 2022 in October, and then it continued. And we looked at the different series of issuances from W, and it would get us through 2026. So we're looking at about, if we went into quarter four of 2026, to finish up Reynolds.
Thank you.
So with that question, it just leads into like my concern about overall with the bond and where we are after we were to say yes to these things, because we want to make sure that all of our costs are taken care of, and this would obviously take out a large portion of the bond. So I'm not saying that's a reason not to do it. What I am saying is that we should be intentional about our next steps with the bond, and I think we should have that conversation, too. Sorry, Dr. Norman, did you have something else?
Right, and that speaks exactly to the issuance. We'd be looking at probably, we could start programming both Reynolds and Surfside, and it's not going to eat up all of the first issuance of the bond. We could do other things district-wide that are on a smaller scale, but we'd look at probably, I'd say at least ten million out of the first issuance. We'd have startup projects like Shade Structures, looking at all of our playgrounds. We'd go around and see what district-wide needs to be done. But overall, we'd want to set some money aside also as we move into construction costs, but we wouldn't eat up all fifty million right out of the gate. We'd get to touch a lot of our sites throughout the district while also starting the first phases for both of these projects, the rebuild and the modernization.
And we also have properties in asset management right now as well that could be used for either one of these projects.
But I would also expect, I mean, tonight, we are not in a position to dealing with all the fine points of Stacy's motion, I would say. I will be able to touch Reynolds and Surfside and other related issues moving forward. So if you're trying to pare that thing down tonight, Eric, to it's not a dime over twenty-five million or forty-nine million, this isn't the conversation tonight, please.
No, it's not.
You know.
Sorry, Mike, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm sorry, and I took, took it on you, but I just, I don't want to get into a long conversation on this. I beg you, with lots of details, because we don't have those details. Okay, so.
You both bring up really great, no, but you both bring up great points, because we are going to be coming forward with our bond management company, CCMOS, and we're going to be presenting our highest need projects. That was direction that we received from the board a few meetings back, and we'll be sharing now that we know potentially the direction that the board's going to go after you vote, then we can come forward with the high-needs projects across the district. And then I think we'll be able to speak better to how the different issuances will be spent, because you don't spend it fifty million at a time. You plan all of it out so that you have the escalation costs embedded, and you can know for the life of the bond, the great impact and work you can do throughout the district. And that way, all the different communities know how the bond's going to be touching their facilities.
Right, that's why it's hard to move forward on this large issuance or this large assignment. So anyway, so that is one piece just for the board to consider. And then also the budgetary one, I think this is another reason why we need to come back and look at how are we going to get our budget straightened out. If this is, it wasn't the main reason to do this, but it was part of the reasons was to look at our budget overall and try and make sure that our budget is fiscally sound moving forward. So I just would again ask that we engage in a robust conversation the next time we have a chance to about what we can do to make our budget long-term lean stable. Then the other thing is there's, sorry, go ahead.
And it will, Eric, on that note, I know that in our November meeting, we will be taking the first step towards having those conversations. That will be coming up in our next, next week's meeting already. So just so you know, to look at the budget, I just feel strongly that keeping the cuts away from the classroom or these efficiencies that we're looking for, because that's what they are, we can, we can find them elsewhere and not impact some of our high-priority students.
And then should we, should we be talking about, again, because we're kind of coming at this raw, if the TWI, TWBI program wasn't at Reynolds, will we be building a smaller school? So if maybe the TWBI program was at Libby or Del Rio, where there is extra space, would you then make a smaller school at the Reynolds site?
When we looked at that, trustee Joyce, it looked like most of our students, when we looked at our map of where the students lived and walked to, were actually residents. And that is a trend that you see across districts, across counties, that typically the TWBI schools, they, they are really popular programs, and they draw in the community. And so we only had fourteen from even outside Oceanside, but most of the kids belong to the Reynolds community.
Okay.
Okay. And may I add that that is a growing community?
Yeah, I'm not advocating that we don't do it. I'm just saying that this decision has impacts on other things that we should be considering and be taking action on soon. That's, that's all my concerns. I'm, you know, I think we should be having more community schools, not less community schools. I think we should have kids that can get to their schools easily, and if we need to right-size the school campuses, then that's, that's what we should do as well.
Thanks, Eric, for waiting in. Eleanor, do you have any thoughts?
I do, and I'm, I'm, I'm really unconcerned that we're allowing special self-serving politically interested dictate the direction that we want to go in terms of providing quality education and what's, what is best for the greater good of the community. I really hope that we're being very objective. I'm very much in support of rebuilding Reynolds. I've been there several times. I think, quite frankly, you know, it's dilapidated. It very much is, as I said many times, deja vu of the kind of schools that I went to in Virginia. And it's sad, because you know, it is our, it is a learning environment, and it is a working environment. And if, and it definitely affects morale at both levels, whether we're talking about our scholars or whether we're talking about our, our staff. You know, they deserve the very best that we can provide. Thank you.
Thanks, Eleanor. Raquel?
I actually, yeah. Surprise, right? I like the motion. I'm very much for the motion. I don't agree with the consolidation. I didn't ever agree with the consolidation. It just, it was too much too soon right now with everything that's going on for these families, you know, especially for our students. And the only concern that I have is still that fifty million, and like Eric was just talking about, that if we're looking at seventy million down the road, then we need to be able to factor that in. But knowing that we have other, other properties that are, you know, in, in asset management and stuff like that, that, that will help to be able to, to support the needs that we need to, that we need and have for, for fixing our schools. And that goes with Surfside as well. You know, we look at Surfside and the needs that they have, but looking particularly at the things that they need and talking to staff. My biggest thing is that we need to talk to the staff at these sites to see what they really need to make it really happen to be what it needed to be, because we, we tend to many times just do what we think is best and not listen to the staff so much, but listen to what the community says only and not to overhaul. And we need to, I think, refocus that, that priority as to the ones that are working with our students that are just in there and out there all the time with them, so that we can actually give them what they need to be able to have our students succeed in an amazing way that, you know, they can, that they would continue to do that, actually. So I'm for the motion in the sense of that I agree that we don't do the consolidation. I'm for, you know, modernizing the Surfside schools and Surfside school site and, you know, property there and doing what they need, and we need to, I think, especially like when we look at the stuff with Surfside, things move very slowly for whatever reason, and I don't know exactly why and what we need to do differently to make things happen at that school site. And I feel like they kind of, or they feel maybe that they're kind of just like the forgotten stepchild. And so we need to focus our priorities, I think, a little bit differently with that. The rebuild, again, still struggle with the money part of it, because I look at everything, you know, I'm that person that goes to every school site, and you look at everything that needs to happen at every school site, and the needs that are there are great. You know, you go to a football game at a high school, and there's no parking. You know, there, there are needs. There are some serious needs throughout our campuses. So I think if we can do that and focus on all, all things as we go along and make sure that we're doing that, then I will work through this as best as I can.
You actually brought up a great question. Will Surfside also begin now? Because that campus is, we're going to begin simultaneously designing for them.
Yes, we would begin now with fervor and excitement.
And both of them are long overdue. So I noticed, I noticed, I've seen the check of the participants, but forty people have jumped on in the last like twenty minutes. So I'm going to read the motion as it stands, and then if we're okay, board colleagues will move to public comment. If anybody wants to make a public comment, we had eighteen people sign up. Some of them may feel they don't want to talk anymore. I don't know. So the, the motion that's on the floor right now that it looks like I have support for is we will not move forward with consolidation of schools at this time, and we will start the process to rebuild Reynolds Elementary and modernize Surfside Academy. So I'll leave that out there. I have a first and a second. We're going to pause and take public comment unless my board colleagues have more questions. Eric, you're on mute. What do you got?
Yes, yes, but go ahead. Let's.
No, ask your questions. This is the time. This is the topic.
Surfside is not a full rebuild, so will it take five years?
No, it won't take as long, but it will take, you know, the same amount of time to meet with our committees, and you've been through that where we go through programming, and we talk to everyone to see what the needs are at the school. We talked to all the different groups, but it won't take five years.
Okay, and we've been shifting groups in and out of there somewhat, because we had adult transition, and they're at a different site, too. I do think we should have a holistic conversation about these different groups that are at different sites right now, and even talk about our students who are homeschooled but come in a couple days a week or the alternative high school. These are all very unique programs, and I think we should be looking, especially if we have space around the district at sites, to make sure that we are housing everybody in the appropriate place, and especially as we're about to build a perfect place for, for a program. So hopefully that, you know, we can look at that holistically moving in this process.
Yes, all that would be determined through programming, and that's when we would be interviewing ESS, the school site, and determining who would be part of those committees and who would have the input to share that information.
And Eric, specifically, we've had those conversations. So we'll circle back with ATP as we want to provide them the best possible facilities that we can. So we'll specifically engage in that conversation to see if we're moving in the right direction or if there is a different direction that we need to go. They have been very, as a staff, very collaborative and very open-minded, and so I believe that we'll find a great solution with them.
Their collaboration won them an award, I think, right?
I think it did, yes.
Award-winning collaboration of our ATP.
And they really live it out, and they've been very open through some very difficult discussions. So we look forward to re-engaging with them.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm looking at my board colleagues. Am I good to go ahead and open up public comment? So before we start public comment, Anne will be calling out five individuals. With Zoom, it got a little hanky last time, so I just want to go over. We're happy to receive public comment about the items and issues on this agenda tonight, which is facilities and consolidations only. If you are off-topic and speaking on a non-agenda item, I'm going to mute you and remind you that you need to stay on topic, because the topic tonight, because it is a special board meeting, is on the facilities and specifically the consolidation. So with that said, you're limited to three minutes, and if you, if your name is called, you need to raise your hand so they can promote you to a panelist, so you will have an option to speak for three minutes. If you do not want to make public comment, don't raise your hand, and we'll just move on to the next person. So Anne, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, our first five will be Michelle King, Allison Minew, Brianna Murrell, Natalie Sanchez, and Desiree Matoya. First speaker is Michelle King. Maybe Michelle didn't want to speak anymore.
No, I'm here.
Hi, Michelle. Your three minutes will start right now.
Okay, well, I'm not going to read what I prepared, because I'm very happy to hear what you guys are saying. So thank you, thank you, thank you for listening to us parents. It's greatly appreciated, and the only thing I would like to say is just in the future, if we could just, as parents, get more notice with this, because we only had just a few weeks to absorb and process all this information. And that caused great panic for all of us. So in the future, please just try to let us know sooner in advance, and that way we can be better prepared. But again, thank you for listening. That was really all I need to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next speaker?
Allison.
Hi, hello, everyone. Well, great news. I'm, I'm very happy that you all decided to listen to the parents being as, as loud as they were and, you know, putting you guys on notice there with Univision and, and the reader and all. Thank you to Todd Madison for his amazing work in, in all of his data information and just, you know, keeping us parents informed. And, and I'm just really thankful that you all listened at this point in time and hope in the future, as Michelle had mentioned, you give us more notice. These schools are definitely, you know, a lot more underprivileged families and children, and it just would have been devastating. So again, thank you for listening to the parents. We will continue to be the voices for our children, for our community. And, you know, next up is hoping that you guys open your doors to us and, and to receiving us with, you know, an in-person meeting for the future. That would be a really great thing to, to happen again, because this Zoom is, is just not the way, you know, to, to have our voices heard. And a comment towards Stacy Begin, why wouldn't we want to comment? Well, we're here, we're commenting, and, you know, those little side remarks are just unfortunate, being that you're the school board president there. So, you know, you, you really, you really need to, to watch how you present yourself in that, because you're working for we, the people. We pay for your seat. And so there you go. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you, Allison. And by no means was I trying to be rude with public comment. So I'm just going to correct that right now. That was not my intent.
Brianna Murrell, she was on, maybe she didn't want to speak. Okay, we'll move to Natalie Sanchez.
Hi, Natalie.
The light, the light.
Can you, sorry, give me one second. So we're out here, you know, I want to thank you guys for making the right decision and thank the board, just the board, for listening to us and our concerns. We're out here in the cold protesting. No, so just thank you. That's it.
Thank you. That was an exciting public comment. Our next speaker?
Desiree.
Hi, good evening. Pretty much to echo what everybody else has said, thank you for listening to the community. Thank you, I am a parent of two students at Reynolds and the Dual Immersion Program. And I'm just overjoyed that we're going to be able to stay and see our beautiful Reynolds. Just pre-done for the teachers, the staff, the students. I'm excited and thank you for making the investment into a school that is very deserving. I'm sure everybody will be overjoyed. So again, thank you for listening and allowing. And again, next time, yeah, some more time would be greatly appreciated because a lot of parents weren't aware. So we got our voices out there, we rallied up our parents, our students and made some noise. So I'm glad you guys listened. So have a great evening and looking forward to this being cemented. Go ahead and vote, thank you.
Thanks, Desiree. Do you need to call up the next speaker or is it Julia next?
Julia will go next, yes.
Hi, yes, this is Julia.
Hi, Julia, you're up for public comment.
Okay, I just want to, again, like everybody else, thank you for listening to us and Reynolds, Libby and Del Rio parents and everybody involved. We are so proud of you, we love you all, we came together. And I just want to end it with, once a Viking, always a Viking, we love everybody and we get to keep our school, good job, y'all.
All right, thanks for that public comment, Julia. Ann, do you want to call up the next five?
Yes, one second, Stacy. Okay, one second. Okay, so do we, do we have Marissa? Okay, we're going to have Todd Madison speak.
All right, well, thank you very much. And thanks again for your motion, I appreciate that, absolutely. A testament to real parent power when we choose to exercise it. Thanks to Natalie and the rest for that. So your instruction to find efficiencies to close the budget gap concerns me though. Thanks to Eric for his questions. The OUSD budget is typically $230 million. Of that, 90% is pay and benefits, you guys know these things. This means only $23 million in total is for everything else the schools do. Given that the county has said that the last bonus raises will result in need to cut almost $30 million in the budget, which you're supposed to provide a plan for by next month, it's a bit hard to see how you can cut $30 million from a discretionary budget that's only $23 million. Is this new math perhaps? Where is the elsewhere that Stacy mentioned? There are no efficiencies that accomplish this. There is no elsewhere that doesn't affect the education of our kids. So now we move the decision on what to cut from our kids to a future board meeting where attendance will be far smaller. Great strategic move, I have to say. Then we find out what we're going to cut from our kids because doing that now would highlight which candy you're going to take from which babies to support higher pay and benefits for district employees. To recap the situation, in September, we saw the county send a letter to the district letting them know they were required to cut tens of millions of dollars from the budget to avoid bankruptcy. The district responded by giving itself bonus raises, adding $10 million to that deficit. The county responded with another letter indicating approval would require even more cuts. Neither of those county notices were disclosed to parents nor were the plans for cuts to the county requires. That would be inconvenient, telling parents that you were going to cut from their kids so your superintendent could make another $15,000 a year or your teachers' union president another $9,000 a year. That would be very difficult, I'm sure. So I'm sure the plan to close a school in a low-income, mostly Hispanic neighborhood came from that because it would be difficult for those parents to advocate for themselves. I'm very glad they were able to step up and make this happen. We saw this in 2018 when the district was running a deficit and gave itself bonus raises. We saw this in 2019 when the district couldn't afford bus service to the kids at Crown Heights but was still able to give itself millions in bonus raises. And now we see it again. This obviously will not end until parents can make a decision on where to send their kids to school without being locked into sending them to a district that doesn't care about their kids. School Choice would let OUSD close whatever schools it wants or make whatever cuts it wants, parents could just go somewhere else. There's nothing that would give more power to low-income parents. If a parent doesn't have the time to be here to speak, they can just leave and take their money with them. So join us in that fight, we're out there getting signatures. Sign up for email at Californiaschoolchoice.org to be notified when someone's in your area collecting those signatures. All our board hears in these things generally is wah, 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 wah. Let's force them to hear what we're actually saying like they did tonight, all the time, not just one time. Californiaschoolchoice.org, that's Californiaschoolchoice.org, thank you.
All right, Ann, will you call up the next four speakers, please?
Next speaker would be Tiffany Ortega and then Marissa Crawford, Veronica Velasquez, Jewel Langen, Patty Kay, Carmen Montiel. Her speaker is Tiffany Ortega.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Cooper Ortega and I'm the president of the Oceanside Teachers Association. Thank you for listening to the input of teachers and families, but I'd like to address what I make. I make a career of teaching. This is my 26th year of teaching in Oceanside, most recently working an extended day and an extended year contract. I make meeting the needs of OUSD families a goal. I designed the Surfside K-5 Independent Study Program, implemented my vision and grew the program. I made home visits, deliveries to living rooms, collected work from front porches. I made teaching from kitchen tables and on trampolines work. I made my classroom accepting and bright. I made my students feel comfortable and confident. I made certain my families felt engaged. I made time for anyone who needed it. I made learning fun. I make personal sacrifices. I filled my classroom with materials that I purchased with my own money. Home visits were made using my personal vehicle, paying for my own gas without reimbursement and definitely on my own time. I make my family come second more times than I care to admit. Second to my students, their families, my colleagues, my career. This is a choice I would make again because that's what Oceanside teachers do. But let me tell you what I didn't make. I didn't make a salary of $194,000. But a community member continuously makes false claims regarding what I make. There's a reason he uses that number, it advances his agenda. One that's like a neon sign behind him as he speaks. You see, the amount is from a website that seeks to vilify public employees and the public sector that employs them. Its goals is to create, I'm sorry, to increase privatization and is funded by conservative business groups with a mission to undermine the public sector and organized labor. Court documents from a 2015 lawsuit reveal that these companies had two shared goals, to persuade public sector union members to leave their union and to diminish the power of public sector unions. These groups are funded by the billionaire class interested in channeling wealth to the 1%. Their tax returns support this claim showing donations from sources such as the Koch Brothers. So while they make it a priority to scapegoat public educators, public school districts and public education, we will continue to make the teachers, students and families of Oceanside, along with the institution of public education, our priority. And I'll continue to not make $194,000, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, I'm looking, did she drop off?
Marissa Crawford.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Marissa.
Good evening, I'm just, my heart was heavy, seriously, sorry, good evening, everybody. My heart was so super-heavy behind all of this. The consolidation and the process and the communication. And now I'm just elated with joy overflowing. I was like about to cry but I didn't want to because someone jumped out my house. But I wanted to cry when I heard the motion that Stacy made. And so I just like to say thank you to trustee Stacy Begin. Thank you to Raquel Alvarez, trustee Raquel Alvarez. Thank you to trustee Mike Blessing. Thank you to trustee Eleanor Evans. And thank you to trustee Eric Joyce for listening to the people. That's what we're here for. My mantra is taxpayer dollars. And I am just so overjoyed and I so appreciate the hard decision this was and the hard work that you guys do. And thank you, thank you, thank you. And I love you Tiffany Ortega. And with that, I'm complete.
Next speaker Veronica Velasquez.
Dr. Vitale, board members, distinguished board members and colleagues. My name is Veronica Velasquez. And I would just like to thank all of the board members for making, or not yet have making that decision, but moving forward to not consolidate classes. I think it's important, as a city of Oceanside, resident for over 45 years, been in this district for 24 years, and I too work very hard. I don't get paid a whole heck of a lot of money. I donate my time, most of the time, as a campus supervision assistant. So I appreciate your hard work that you have done. And moving forward, I think that it's exciting that you have finally listened to the people and are willing to work with the people. So with that, I just reiterate what everybody else has said. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Jewel Langen.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much. So I guess I won't be reading what I have prepared because the motion was made earlier before the meeting. So I just want to say thank you to the board members, to, for listening actually to the parents, the staff who've had comments in. And it was really like the previous speaker was talking about, like gut-wrenching because again, as a sped teacher, this was one of my biggest concerns was for the sped families of the months of years. So thank you so much for listening and I look forward to hopefully a really good rest of the year. But thank you again. And Tiffany, you rock, girl, you rock. But thank you, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Jewel.
Patty. Patty.
I see a Pat up on the screen.
Oh, I think I, okay, right, okay, sorry, I tuned in late because I was at the district office rally. So I keep hearing thank yous and that Stacy made a motion to not close, is that correct? But, but did, was it voted on or just the motion?
It was not voted on, so this is public comment.
Right, but you made the motion but they're all thanking you but it's not passed yet? It hasn't, the board members haven't voted yet?
We have not voted yet.
Oh, okay, so their thank yous are premature possibly? Okay, well, in that case, then I just wanted to ask, since the district is quite involved with the SEL, if there's been an SEL study on school closures here in Oceanside? Is, are you able to answer that?
No, you were in public comment, so you're making a public comment on facilities and consolidation. That is the topic tonight.
Right, well, facilities, closing facilities, right? So, but the district seems concerned about the social-emotional learning aspect of everything. So I would think that this would fit into the social-emotional learn-
I think we lost Pat, Patty, is she still there?
Should I call up the next speaker?
Yes, that's fine.
Carmen Montiel.
Hi, hello, good evening. My name is Carmen Montiel and I'm so happy to hear that we're not be consolidating Libby and Del Rio. I have been working for the district for over 20 years. And Del Rio was one of my first ones. I was a new duty and I'm a proud staff member of the kitchen. And I will love to keep seeing those smiles on my school. Thank you very much for not putting this in process, thank you.
Our last five speakers will be Graham Frazier, Larry Berry, Michael Mitchell, Rachel Bartlett, and Michael Richardson. First speaker, Graham Frazier. Okay, he's not here, Larry Berry. You're on, Larry. Larry, you have to unmute yourself. Okay, so let's keep moving, we'll go to-
You hear me?
Yes, we hear you, Larry.
All right, Stacy, you went off top, you know, you let that one Oceanside Teachers Association Ortega go way off. You should have muted her way before that.
Actually, she started out-
I'm speaking now, I'm speaking, public comment. I've been on several of the Citizens of Bond Oversight Committees and we built Del Rio and Libby and spent a lot of money on those schools to pick them up and then to hear and condense it. Reynolds, we put in, you know, when I heard it, it's falling apart. I see there's new stuff that, you know, we built on the playground, which we asked for the needs and the money we had. Any new construction that we even think about, because of the current situation with prices, inflation, I think anything of doing like Surfside, which is Bitmar, I guess, and doing the Reynolds is going to have to wait at least a year before the prices of stuff start coming down. And that should be in consideration for whatever we do. But I'm glad that, you know, between the two, the assistant superintendent Newman and Valadee, the superintendent, they don't have a clue what they're doing here. And we look like the gang that can't shoot straight here. It's money-wise and putting fear and using the, putting fear into the comments for people that, these are neighborhood schools and we need neighborhood schools where people can have a community, they have a voice, and they can feel proud about their neighborhood in the schools. So any thought of closing or shutting down or condensing is just foolish. And it shows that the superintendent and the assistant superintendent are not based, don't get the feel. I don't know, I know Newman doesn't live in Oceanside, San Clemente, I guess. But, you know, this is Oceanside, this is our city, I've been here 40 years. And I've been in the school district since the 80s with my children. And I'm proud of these schools, and I'm proud that I served on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committees to build these schools, to make neighborhood schools. And for these two nitwits to come in and start closing them like, you know, like they're a strip mall shopping center is disgraceful. And they've lost all my confidence in them. And especially, thank God for Todd Madison, it's actually has the numbers. And you know what, the numbers don't lie. And that Oceanside Teachers Association got another thing coming. So we need to keep these neighborhood schools, start making these schools proud of us. I know Bonsel West is one of the best-performing schools in San Diego County. And that's only a mile, two miles from each of these schools. And it's our teach-
Did we lose him?
Did you hear me?
Yeah, you had 15 seconds left, can you, sorry about that, I'm not sure what happened.
I think you probably did it, thanks.
All right, next speaker?
Our next speaker will be Michael Mitchell and then Rachel.
Am I up?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, board, good evening, administration, I'm Michael Mitchell, I'm all you have seen me before. Just want to keep it brief. The motion that was brought up by board president Stacy Begin is the one that I agreed with. I just want to point out that, you know, we can disagree respectfully but also come out to a conclusion- but also come out to a conclusion that is for the greater good for everyone in OUSD. And so this is the outcome that I wanted, just in a sense of a good outcome for, not just for Reynolds, for also for Libby, Del Rio and for Surfside that was good for all the students. Because at the end of the day, we want not just greatness, we want excellence for our students and for our teachers so that we can have a good learning environment for all that's involved and that's all I want to say. So thank you for my public input.
Rachel.
Hi, I want to begin by saying that I absolutely support this motion at the beginning to rebuild both school campuses. I really appreciate what Raquel said at the beginning about Surfside kind of being an afterthought in this whole equation as far as what was going to go on with the schools. I'm a, I'm proud to have my child enrolled at Surfside. He's a third grader now, he started at kindergarten. And to anyone who's not aware, this program is phenomenal. It is such an intimate school environment. All of the staff, all of the teachers, Principal Eric Franzen is so accessible and so available and does a phenomenal job running the school. Tiffany Ortega, who spoke earlier, pours her heart and soul into the children and into the classroom and into this program. I have been on the receiving end of all of her work, the drop-offs, the communication. And she does not stop. I mean, this program is amazing. I run into so many parents who tell me, who live in Oceanside and tell me, well, they're using this charter school or that charter school. And I always respond by telling them what Surfside has to offer because what they can offer to students who don't thrive in a larger school environment is something that I am so glad that this board seems willing to invest in. I just have one note about the meeting last Wednesday. As far as the plans to merge the schools went, a transit center does not equal accessibility. And so if you are considering rearranging schools and merging students, you know, telling students who are used to attending a local school that they can take the bus across town might be sentencing them to a two-hour commute on the bus. Other than that, you know, I am, I'm really happy to see the direction that this, this board is taking and thank you, that's all I have.
Michael Richardson.
Yeah, I'm here. Hello?
Hey.
Yes, hi. First off, I want to say Stacy, what is that pier in your backdrop that is not the Oceanside Pier? What, what's going on there? Why are you, why do you use that as a phony?
Public comments are on facilities and consolidations, Michael.
Alright, well, I'll talk about the facilities. The teacher who spoke first earlier talked about claims that she makes 100 and, what, 80, $90,000? Todd Madison never, ever, ever said that. He's, he claims that the, that the management makes that much money. Teachers make much less. But why do they make what they make? Because they're failing. Why are schools failing our kids?
Michael, just a reminder, this has to be on consolidations and facilities.
I'm going to get to that. So, so the issue is, you, you, I, I'm pleased that you've got a motion. Obviously, you haven't voted on it yet. Who knows what you'll decide? Patty pointed out that you haven't even voted on it yet, but everybody's joyful. So that's great. But the fact is that you don't have the money. You have given yourselves big bonuses, huge egregious bonuses, especially to your management and your superintendent. And, and, and they don't deserve it because your schools are failing. So you need to rescind those bonuses and go back to the drawing board and be, run this district like a business. And it needs to pay for itself and it needs to perform. It needs to provide education, quality education for our kids. Teaching them how to love America and teaching them how to, to respect each other and forget all this other nonsense, thank you.
Alright, do we have one more public comment? I see a hand raised.
Laura Fisher.
Laura, you're up.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to let you know, first of all, thank you for listening to us and yes, we are still out here on the corner in front of the district offices. We've got Fox 5 here even. We just want to say thank you so much. We love our kids, we love what you guys are listening to us. We love the signs, we love everybody that was out here, the kids, the adults. You listen to us, we appreciate it. And thank you so much. So just go over there and vote now, okay? Thank you, yay!
That's it for the public comments Stacy.
Right, thank you for those public comments. We had quite a few tonight and there were quite a few last week as well. And I want to say huge thank you for everyone that did the survey link, that provided us information and their thoughts and concerns about facilities and consolidation. We had over 100 pages, I know we read through them, so, and thank you for your emails. So do I need to read the motion again? And then we'll call for a vote, or actually, I'm looking at my board members. Eric, hold on, do you, do you have any more questions? Do you want to engage in some discussion?
I think since we had new people join us, you should read the motion again. Just for the sake of clarity.
Alright, I'll read the motion again. We will not move forward with consolidation of schools. At this time, we will start the process to rebuild Reynolds Elementary and modernize Surfside Academy.
Thank you.
I have, I made the motion and Mike Blessing seconded it.
Let's vote.
Alright, I'll call for the vote. All in favor supporting this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor? Alright, motion carries 5-0. Thanks again to the district for doing all that work and looking into this. Appreciate it, must appreciate it. Is that the end of our meeting? On the agenda, I'm looking at Dr. Vitale, yep. Alright, thank you, thank you board members.
Thank you, thank you Stan for all the work you do. It's greatly appreciated, thank you so much.
Thank you for all the work and the time, everybody. Thank you to all the families for taking the time to answer and take the surveys to, to just email us. We do read all of them, even though we don't all answer, just know that we are all reading them and we are listening and we are hearing you. We are, a lot of us parents in the community too, so just know that we're affected, you know, with everything that goes on too. So thank you everybody for participating.
And I love seeing, I love seeing all that celebration of our schools. Let's, let's carry that momentum in, right? Let's, you know, as we start to be able to engage more on campuses, let's see that celebration of all the great things that are happening on our school sites.
Fabulous.
Alright, the meeting is adjourned at 7:00 PM.
Good job Stacy.
Good night guys.
Eric, thank you. Good night.
Night.